Good afternoon, folks. I'm Alana, a volunteer advocacy fellow with Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits. And today we're joined by two candidates for the district five seat of the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors. As an organization, SDCN hosts this candidate forum to provide nonprofit leaders with the opportunity to learn more about the visions, ideas, and priorities of candidates for the office. Today, we'll focus our discussion on issues that impact nonprofits as community-based service providers, government contractors, and advocates. As a continuing SDCN practice, I want to acknowledge that this community center sits on the unceded lands of the Oaxaca Uvalde tribe. Together, let us commit to educating ourselves and advocating for indigenous peoples and all communities that have been neglected and displaced by the US government or other colonial powers. Before we get started, I'd like to take a minute to thank our sponsors. That is Silicon Valley Community Foundation and West Valley Community Services. We truly couldn't put together this forum without them. Thank you very much. And to keep things off, I'd like to introduce our moderator for today. Please welcome Lamonica Peters. Lamonica is a San Jose bureau news reporter for KTPU Fox Two. She's also a part-time journalism professor and has been covering Bay Area news since 2022. Without further ado, I'm going to pass it to Lamonica.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us for this very special and important occasion. First, we first want to ask that you please turn your cell phones on or off or on vibration so you can make it through this without interruption, and this will be recorded. So if you're hiding from the FBI, this is not the place to be. This is on. Can you guys hear me?
It's not on.
It's not on? Okay, there we go. Yeah, sorry. If you're hiding from the FBI, this is not the place to be because we are recording. Channel two is here, the station that I work for, as well as, I believe, the organization is video taken. So I've kind of asked you to also put your cell phones on vibration or on off just for the next hour. I would love to just stand here and talk to you guys, but it's really important that I speak to the script so that the candidates know the rules. So I'm going to be reading this, most of the things I'm going to have to repeat, you know, just to make sure that it's correct. So let's get, let's get started. I want to go over the ground rules regarding timing and today's format for this forum. Candidates, you each will have up to two minutes for opening statements. Afterwards, I will ask you a series of sponsored submitted and audience pre-submitted questions. You both will have two minutes to answer each question plus an additional optional minute for a rebuttal if you choose to take it. Candidates, please also refrain from asking each other questions during rebuttal. In this forum, we will be including a lightning round of questions, which will be a mixture of fun topics that will require a yes or no answer or a response of one sentence or less. After asking or few, after asking a few more questions, we will finish up by having each candidate share their closing statements, which will take up to one minute. Okay? A few final notes, please remember to be respectful to one another, and the time limit is allotted with each answer. For your convenience, we will have a timer located on the screen right there in front of, in the front row, so you can visually see how much time remains for each question. After you're done speaking, please remember to mute your microphone. Finally, for the attendees or campaign staff in the room, please note campaign or distribution of materials during this forum. All right, let's introduce, I want to let our candidates introduce themselves. Okay, we will start with Sally Leeper. And we also have Margaret Alekoga here. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, so Sally, we'll start with you first. You have two minutes for your opening statement.
Great. Thank you so much to Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits, to all of the co-sponsoring organizations who are participating tonight, and to everybody that really cares about our county, who has turned out here tonight. We very much appreciate the opportunity to prep for this debate, the substantive questions that you gave us, really occasioned, I know, both of us having a chance to think about the issues that face our county. I had come to this with a great deal of very relevant experience professionally and also my lived experience. And I have served as a city council member, as mayor of Mountain View, as a county commissioner for social services in the state assembly at a time when we had one of the largest budget shortfalls in California history and our human services and social services were really at risk. And now on the State Board of Equalization, having a chance to be on the revenue side of things at both the State Board of Equalization and the Franchise Tax Board, bringing in the revenue to support all the good things that our county governments do. We were asked to share a little bit about our vision of Santa Clara County. In a nutshell, what I have focused on is upholding the humanistic traditions that we have had for many, many years in Santa Clara County and updating them for the times that we're living in, which are very unprecedented. The cost of housing, the cost of childcare, the need for greater equity and for a healthy community. So we have a lot of work to do, but I really welcome it. So thank you so much.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's really an honor to be here. Thank you to SDCN, Silicon Valley Community Services, and Community Campaign for sponsoring this forum. I'm Margaret Alekoga, currently a city council member in the city of Mountain View. This is my sixteenth and final year. I've been mayor twice, once during the Great Recession and again during COVID, so I'm often called the crisis mayor. But I very much appreciate with all of you too in the nonprofit world, I've had the opportunity to serve on various nonprofit boards that are represented here today. And I actually worked for Asian Americans for Community Involvement. So I very much understand the work, the important work you do. And what a difference three months make. And we have, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't put my mic on. You heard me up till now. But what a difference three months make in that we have this historic election, definitely, obviously, at the federal level, but here locally too, at the county supervisors level, we have the opportunity to make some history. I come to this all not only with my experience in elected and nonprofit work, as well as in the private sector, but with my lived experiences as a daughter of working-class immigrants, a working mom. I ran a small business for a while too, and a breast cancer survivor. And these are the experiences that inform me and that I've used in my work to this point locally. I've worked, rolled up the sleeves and worked on the important issues of affordable housing, healthcare, the environment, climate change, transportation, and quality of life issues. And that's what I would like to continue to do at the county level, working with all of you in partnership. Thank you very much.
Lamonica, I'm going to ask you to put your microphone back where you can. Peter, you guys can hear me? Perfect. Okay. We are going to begin our question-answer period with our first question. Composed of over 125 nonprofit leaders and allies, the Racial Equity Action Leadership Coalition has been meeting since June 2020 to advocate for a more racially just and equitable society. Real Santa Clara County Work Group has been working closely with county leaders to deepen democratic structures and build a comprehensive civic engagement process that centers the voices of individuals with lived experience. What ideas or commitments would you have to enhance, strengthen, or expand civic engagement approaches? Would you commit to supporting an Office of Civic Engagement? Margaret, we'll start with you this time.
So as a woman of color, it's a very, a big part of why I do what I do is to ensure that everyone, regardless of background, has a voice in our community. So I very much believe in civic engagement. I got involved myself as a preschool student where I met my future boss, Congresswoman Anna Hesch, who was a senior tip artist at the time. And so mentorship is definitely a big, I think, a big benefit and something that we should encourage. I've also been involved in a number of organizations and helped start here in Chupetito, upon the agency of American Leadership Institute, with Mayor Michael Chang. And so I've been very much committed to making sure that we have programs that teach or train future leaders, ways to get involved as parents for immigrants. And we have, growing immigrant community, even in Mountain View, we've established a Spanish leadership academy. And then we also recently established a Mandarin language leadership academy with our commissions and boards. I have always been encouraged to reach out to the community and make sure that we have folks who represent the community applying, not only applying, but getting onto these boards. So I think it's about working with all of you, frankly, because you have the connections, in the grassroots connections, to the community. And so a lot of this is really going out and identifying folks and encouraging them, making it easy and accessible for them to get involved. I would look to partner with all of you to do that outreach into the community. Thank you.
Sally?
Thank you. I do support the formation of an Office of Civic Engagement. And I also support the formation of an all-of-government approach to civic engagement and to education for the community, particularly on legal topics, particularly on rights of renters and et cetera. The way that we engage with the community has to be their time schedule, not expecting folks to come to a meeting on a Thursday afternoon, but doing things that facilitate the involvement of the people whose opinions we would like to get. And doing it with childcare, with the opportunity to have dinner at a gathering event, and really elevating the concerns and the knowledge that people have gained through lived experience and bringing that into policymaking at the board. At certain times, I've seen maybe a lack of connection there in terms of our housing crisis and discussion on the board about why would someone sleep in a car with an infant instead of going into a shelter? If someone is immediately postpartum, the privacy of their car and the ability to keep care of their baby, not being in a room full of adults, can be the most effective way to deal with things. So for every policy consideration, I think that we need to bring in voices and experiences from outside of the system to give us information about how people are living in real time.
Thank you, Sally. Question number two. In March, voters narrowly approved Proposition One, which aims to modernize the Mental Health Services Act, bolster behavioral health housing, and support mockteeth and facilities through a $6.336 billion bond. This fall, Californians will also vote on Proposition Thirty-Six, which would classify certain drug offenses as treatment-mandated felonies and increase the penalties for some drug crimes and theft. Also, advocates highlight the value of short-term treatment beds in temporarily addressing street homelessness. Others warn that the compulsory, compulsory care combined with stricter drug enforcement represents a punitive approach to addiction and mental illness that has previously failed and would disproportionately target people of color, lower-income folks, and individuals with disabilities. Among the options of constructing new inpatient facilities, strengthening preventive care, and building permanent supportive housing, what approach or approaches do you think the county should take to continue to address our community's mental health and addiction needs? I'm going to start with Sally this time.
Okay, we're going straight into it. So I did not support Prop. Lynn on the March election. I didn't think it was a wise idea to take mental health funds that were devoted to preventative care for youth and services for youth and adults who are severely mentally ill and to move that money to a different purpose. I think we need to grow the pie, not divide the pie and divide the community. I think that the answer is really supportive housing. Any kind of housing is stabilizing, and any kind of housing will help individuals achieve recovery. It is, I won't say impossible, but extremely, extremely difficult to achieve recovery from substance use disorders or from mental health concern on the streets. And our current plan for housing in Santa Clara County has been in place for over five years. It does not take into account the market that we now find ourselves in. So we need a major overhaul of debt. But I think that really the service providers have sustained a lot of changes, and I know we'll have other questions about some of those changes, but have sustained a lot of policy changes coming from the state level in a very short amount of time. And it has not served our system of care overall very well. So I think we need to work to stabilize those systems and to make sure that the service providers have a fighting chance to provide the services that they're tasked with.
Okay, let me make sure that's okay. She wants me to repeat the last question to say it again. That's okay? Okay. We are on question number two. Among the options of constructing new inpatient facilities, strengthening preventive care, and building permanent supportive housing, what approach or approaches do you think the county should take to continue to address our community's mental health and addiction needs?
Thank you. So I would look at it as an all-of-the-above approach. And this comes from my own experience working really with, I'm sorry. So again, I would take an all-of-the-above approach. And this comes from my experience working primarily on the issue of homelessness in our city. I'm very proud of what we've been able to do as a city. I think we've punched above our weight class in many areas, especially in addressing affordable housing, housing and homelessness. And what I've seen is that maybe the, it's a very diverse population that we have, and there's no one-size-fits-all. And so it's very important for us to be able to meet people where they are and tailor the response, the services to their needs. So certainly, I'm supportive of the supportive housing. We're both, we are building that in Mountain View, that type. We have state parking lots for curlicle dwellers. We have Project Homing, we have two projects in the works. And we have several line of affordable housing projects with the county in partnership with the county using Measure Eight funds. And what's key to all of that is that we provide the case management, preventive services, job training, childcare, listen to needs of each of those individuals. And I think that's really important to, that we recognize and we appreciate each individual and what their needs are. And so that would be my approach. I'm scared of this debate of, you know, pushing that funding here or there. To me, Frank, I think it has to be all of the above.
Thank you. Sally, would you like to rebuttal? Have one minute.
Well, I would just add to it that we have to look really closely at our community of providers for shelter and transitional housing. We basically have about four providers in Santa Clara County. And so some of the housing that Margaret noted appropriately has been really a struggle for the consumers who have actually been living there. Because when it's transitional housing and you're forced to go to sessions, how you should move to the Central Valley and your job and all of your support network are in Santa Clara County, it is an emotional task to go through that time after time after time. And there have been concerns about the lack of a diversity of providers that we have here. And I think we need to make an out-of-state search for best practices and bring in individuals who have lived experience as well as service providers to develop new models.
Thank you, Margaret. Do you have one minute to rebuttal or add something?
Certainly, I agree that there's a lot more work to be done. And we do need to look at best practices. I mean, it's more on the housing side that I recently went to Vienna, Austria, to study their social housing model. And there's a lot of lessons to be learned that we can bring to our community by saying what others do. So yes, and you're right, there's no, there's, nothing is perfect right now. It's all a work in progress. I do believe, agree that we do need more service providers. And that's something that I think we should work together on. I don't have the answers on how to do that right now. I actually would like to hear your ideas, but it's a work in progress. But for me, I believe that everyone should have the ability to do their best. And that's really important for me.
Thank you. Moving on to question number three. And Sally, we'll go back to you starting first. Research shows that individuals with disabilities face significant barriers to retaining housing, placing them at greater risk of homelessness. On August fourteenth, the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority voted to remove the Affordable Housing Bond from the ballot, which would have generated $2.4 billion for governments in the South Bay to build more affordable homes and preserve existing affordable housing, including units for folks with disabilities. What are your ideas or commitments to expanding and protecting revenue sources that would address the housing crisis for people with and without disabilities? Sally?
Thank you. I think that one of the key steps here is to really tell the story for the public about the success of Measure Eight, the 2016 measure that has produced so much housing in so many different communities throughout the county. A lot of people that I talked to as I'm out campaigning said, "Well, whatever happens to Measure Eight?" Well, the money has all been allocated now, and it was used very, very well. Even the civil grand jury said Measure Eight gets some A for getting the money out in a quality way. And I think we need another measure within our county or a two-county measure with San Mateo County to help foster the inter-county communications there. The Bay Area-wide measure was too big to succeed. It is not the right economic times to put a $20 billion measure before the voters. We do need another statewide housing bond. And very, very soon, it's a shame that it wasn't on this November's election. But we need to really focus on all of the types of housing. Compact housing for single individuals, renovation of hotels and motels. The Crestview Hotel in Mountain View is being rehaped by the county. It's taking a very long time, and people are outdoors waiting for housing while that goes on. But we need all the different types of housing. And we do need more funding for it because the revenues coming from our property taxes are in decline, and about a quarter of the money for affordable housing has gone away. While the need for affordable housing has increased and the number of families that are rent burdened or in overcrowded situations has dramatically increased.
Thank you, Sally. Margaret?
Thank you. Actually, the custody that we found out the other day, and I think it's ready to open soon. So I'm looking forward to that. But I actually am on the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority Committee through my assignment on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. So I worked on that regional housing venture effort for the last couple of years. And it was an effort that's been many years in the making, frankly. I think it was even pre-COVID, with the CASA initiative. And so a lot of work was done. I will say it was a huge lift and with nine Bay Area counties trying to work together. And the day we had to pull it off of the ballot was a very sad day. I was quite depressed the whole day. And yet, there were many lessons learned. And we had to do some more debriefing that I already have been in conversation with the folks at the coalition that was going to campaign around that measure. And frankly, I'll be honest, I was concerned about the timing and the timing, and the polling wasn't looking very good. But I also felt like, you know, we need to try, we needed to try something different. And I want to try something again, whether it's regional, like Bay Area counties or fewer number of counties, or frankly, our county alone. We're 25% in the Bay Area. We did Measure Eight, we have that success behind us. I would like to look at what we can do. What I've learned again from my study tour that was tied to PAPA, a couple of strategies, the public bank idea that was part of PAPA, this is something I might explore further. And then the other one that I think we can apply is land-thinking.
Sally, would you like to add anything? Get in the room for one minute?
Sure. I think that Margaret is absolutely correct that it was the right thing to do to remove the $20 billion bond. It was just too big for these economic times. And there has got to be a Plan B for Santa Clara County. Because the interim time period of months that was taken up with something that was too big to cast could have contained a tailored measure for Santa Clara County. And we've got to help our own people if we don't, what else will? And I would say that some things that you have to be part of, part of the pie is the proposition that's on the November ballot to lower the voting threshold for local measures. Prop 33, to allow local communities to adopt rent control, very, very important. And Prop 36, dealing with regrowing our addiction to over-incarceration. You've got to not let our affordable housing money be eaten by over-incarceration.
Thank you. Would you like to move on or end with this? You have one minute. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, I think it was an effort, a good effort. We've been a lot on it, and we need to move forward with our lessons learned. Again, I think there are specific strategies that I picked up that I would like to try. The question for me is, is Santa Clara County large enough to do some of these strategies on its own? That's something that I think we need to explore. Timing-wise, frankly, right now, given the market, the housing market, we're not seeing new housing developments in Mountain View, frankly. And so I don't really, you know, I think this is actually the opportunity for us to plan and plan out a good, strong strategy. I remember during the Great Recession, we did, we did. I remember during the Great Recession, we did the same in Mountain View. We did our general plan update and up till. And we did a lot of planning so we were ready when the market came back. So I think this is actually that time for us to improve and plan.
Thank you. Okay, so we've reached a midpoint in our form. And that means that we are going to go to our quick lightning round, is what we're calling it. The lightning round questions. So these really have nothing to do with my career tonight. They're just fun questions that we need to know, yeah, this on a different level, a different point. So where do we begin? There will be a series of quick questions, each to be answered in a yes or no response or a one, or one sentence or less. We will start with Sally, then I will alternate between the candidates for each question. Are you ready? Now, this is a real test. Don't answer ice cream, which one? Sally, would you rather never get a cold or never be stuck in traffic for the rest of your life?
Quick, 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 these are quick.
I'd rather never get a cold because being in traffic is my downtown.
All right.
I'm really passionate for not getting a cold. It's on your phone. Yeah.
That's all, they rule.
I'd rather not get a cold and I'm a pretty bad patient when it comes to sickness today. So, others.
One sentence, one sentence, yes or no?
One sentence.
Okay. Margaret, you're up first. What is your favorite public park in your district?
I have to say it's in my own city. And it's a custom park.
Okay.
I am going to have to go with Mountain View, too. And I'm going to have to go with Ring Storrs Park. Because it is such a diverse park and I don't have to explain.
One sentence, I'm trying to, we're starting to time. And you all want to go. Okay. Next question, quick lightning round. You've been given $150 million to write, direct, and produce a historical fiction movie of your choice. What time period would you cover, Sally? One sentence.
Okay. I would cover the 1960s, 1970s. There was so much going on and it really laid the underpinnings for a lot.
Okay. Margaret, what movie period, time period?
The turn of the 19th century into the 20th century. In the 19th.
Okay, Margaret. Okay. All right, next question, next question. What artists or podcasts have you been listening to recently, Sally?
Gosh, this is really awful. I just started listening to a geology podcast.
That's it? One sentence, just about geology? Okay. Margaret, what artists or podcasts have you been listening to?
My daughters got me into K-pop, so I was listening to a lot of K-pop artists. And even my two K-pop, the K-pop fest in L.A.
Next question. Who is one fictional character you've been back over for dinner, Margaret?
So I'm a big Star Wars fan and Phyllis Slayer was my favorite mom. So I'd love to have her over.
Thank you. Excellent choice. Sally?
I'd have to say Joe from Little Women. She's super feisty.
Joe from Little Women, it is. Great answers, ladies. And last, a quick round, quick lightning round question. If you have the power to make one thing free for everyone, what would you choose, Margaret?
The dinner.
Okay. Sally?
Elster.
All right, let's get them around and talk. All right, we will continue so we can finish our last questions. Now, this is question number four. This next question has been submitted by Choose Children, an initiative of the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. In a recent public survey conducted by Choose Children, four out of five likely November voters indicated that they want local elective officials to prioritize policies that make Silicon Valley a place where families with children can live and thrive. At the same time, it's estimated that Santa Clara County needs over 19,000 infants and toddler childcare spaces to meet the current demand. And if families are able to find childcare, they are struggling to cope with the high cost of care. Families report having to make difficult financial choices, such as delaying or decreasing retirement savings, using emergency savings, reducing essential spending, and delaying addressing healthcare needs in order to afford care. What specific strategies will you pursue in order to expand access to affordable, quality childcare? Sally?
Thank you. Well, I've been spending a lot of time talking to our home childcare providers. And two of the things that they mentioned, actually it's sort of one thing. What would be important for them is having a registry of substitute providers that could come in so that they could take a sick day, so that they could take a day off. And I think our county could easily implement it and really take some of the stress off the home childcare providers. In terms of center-based care, I would like to see a database that integrates the state inspections of childcare with information about where there are spaces for childcare. Infant care is something that is very much at a shortage and is a high cost for families right now. And I think that we need to increase that supply and make sure that we protect the availability of our very culturally close-to-the-ground, home-based childcare providers as we see an expansion of transitional kindergarten. The expansion of TK is very, very important. But we do risk losing some of the closeness to the ground and some of the emotional support that children receive in a center-based environment or in a home childcare-based environment. In TK, because it's public education, providers are educators, early childhood educators, are not allowed to hug a child. And in the center-based situations and home-based childcare, emotional support of children is absolutely key to their development.
Thank you, Sally. Margaret?
It's on, actually. So as a mother of two now college-aged daughters, and when I first started on City Council, they were three and five. I very much understand the challenges of working moms. And so childcare is definitely a priority for me. I did have a presentation, actually a number of presentations by different organizations. And then recently, our City Council last December passed a resolution to support affordable childcare. And that was a request by Children's Future, that is working in Santa Clara County, to make childcare more accessible and affordable and making it, you know, also not just a social, but an economic benefit or just explaining to folks, educating folks that it's economic that it fits as well. What we've done, and I've given, we've done three things over the years. Prior to my running for City Council in the first place was that the city was talking about building a childcare center with affordable slots. And then teetering on the City Council back and forth for many years. And so I went and spoke on behalf of it. And it's now built, it's been, I'm not sure, 10 or 15 years. And we have actually some spots for low-income families. The problem there is that subsidies are hard to find. So the city actually invested $100,000 a year, taking the lease revenue and putting it back into those slots. So that's a strategy we worked on, how to make it easier for home, especially home-based childcare centers to operate in Mountain View by making their permitting process easier. So and then there's this concept of partnering with companies. And I think there's benefit to that, but I would also caution people have their own childcare center, and recently they closed it. So we need to, and then those children are now, okay.
Finish your vote. Sally? You have one minute.
I appreciate Margaret bringing up our center in Mountain View. That was my project. And it was a very fascinating opportunity to build a childcare center from ground up. And we worked with some consultants who strictly consulted on childcare. And so built-in things to help in development, like crawling nests for infants and things like that. And it was really a fascinating project. And it is one of the spaces around that takes a mix of ages, from infants to toddlers and slightly older. And I think that one of the things that is still out there that's a real need is for placements in childcare for infants and toddlers who have developmental disabilities and who are both atypical and neurotypical infants and toddlers together. And that helps both children.
Thank you. Margaret?
I can actually appreciate Sally bringing that up because when we had chosen an operator for our childcare center, we chose morning league that does actually partner the children with disabilities and with the general population. So I do think that is, you know, a benefit. And I would say going back to my, what I was trying to finish was that the corporation. So we have to figure out a way to talk with them to, again, see it as not just, you know, for their employees necessarily, but really helping to get those two to contribute to the overall hood of childcare. And I think that's what Children's Future is trying to do, that I support very much. So again, we will close their childcare center. That's that many more kids now looking for other spots. And so that's a challenge. But yes, because of TK, and my school friends tell me this, we need to work on the infant zero to four age category.
Thank you. Okay, question number five. Local nonprofits comprise most of the contracted providers that represent 90% of Santa Clara County's behavioral health safety net. However, recent state-level changes in healthcare reimbursement structures known as CAA behavioral health payment reform threaten nonprofits' abilities to financially support themselves and retain sufficient staff to meet community demands. What role can you or your office play in ensuring that Santa Clara County implements payment reform in a manner that enhances or preserves our behavioral health systems of care? Margaret?
The last year and a half, I've had the opportunity to be with many nonprofit which are behavioral health nonprofit organizations and leaders to learn about these issues and how AAM has been one of the top issues. And so just my understanding is that it's something that was implemented in July of 2023. So just a year. And then in the beginning, I have the enforcement rate for the county was very low. And then the board of supervisors, thanks to the advocacy of the behavioral health community was able to convince the board of supervisors to increase that to higher levels. So that really saved, I guess, saved the system is what I've been told. So definitely, we need to look at how to preserve and then increase capacity. And I would, again, go look to our dues. If I were to be elected myself, then my office would work with people, the patients, to really understand the needs and how we can meet those needs. And also really, in particular, for me, again, I go back to my mom and my older daughter actually has had mental health challenges. And because I really see the need, especially in our dues, that's in our focus. And I think we really need to look at preventive care, too. And I really appreciate Project Safety Net and their peer-based aid program, socialized facilitation programs for seniors. And then I'm being innovative. And I'm just really proud to be able to help bring the trust program to the county. We've got some grant funding and some consumer issues. And so we have a pilot program. And I thank David Minetta for that.
You have a round, Margaret. Thank you. Sally?
Thank you. Well, I can't put debris or base onto Kelly. I think the good thing about it was that it was intended to provide open access and quote-unquote, no wrong door. But what came out of that policymaking experiment was not good for the county and not good for service providers. And now that it is passed, the county is left picking up the pieces. Service providers who have had to go through the emotional labor of cutting their own services that they know are critically needed in the community. And the only recourse that the county has is that we're going to try to shift people around so that they still get some kind of a service. And the reality of that is that the relationship between the consumer, the patient, and their family, and a trusted provider is one that is very important. So yes, you can shift someone to a completely different service and hopefully they'll go there and avail themselves of that. But you've broken that essential relationship. And this was a very bad piece of policymaking at the state level. There are a number of community organizations, like Momentum, David Minetta, Margaret mentioned, that are left not getting reimbursed for the services that they provide. And it's been absolute destruction to our rural counties who can no longer get reimbursed for travel time to get out into the community. And there's no way to put the genie back in the bottle at this point. But it makes me feel that my legislative experience is very, very relevant. Because I will advocate for people in our county with the knowledge that I have from being in the legislature.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like to add to that, Margaret?
So I'm not saying that it was good. I'm just saying that that's what it was. And for me, that's really, at the end of the day, what we have to do is, you know, I have a lot of criticism, what happens at the state level and the mandates that, a lot of unfunded mandates that they put down on local governments and cities and counties. But that's, you know, that's another discussion. It's for me, it's really about being pragmatic and just, you know, making do with what we have and making the best of it. I'm very appreciative that we have a county that cares and a board of supervisors made that, made the right decision. I will, you know, continue to try to do the same and work with everyone to figure out the best solutions to make this system work. But sure, if we can change the system, I'd say let's go for it. But, you know, I, that's, again, and we could do that with advocacy. But I, you know, for me, it's about implementation. It's being on the ground level. That's what we have to do.
Thank you. Sally?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add on to the very good things that Margaret said, by saying that there are certain sectors of mental health care that we just don't have a supply of in Santa Clara County. We don't have anywhere near enough trauma care for the number of individuals dealing with trauma that we give. We are a very international community. People are coming here from all kinds of experiences. And we don't have trauma-informed services by and large to receive them. We have one of the very few postpartum programs in the nation. I think there's only three or four of them, and we have one at El Camino Hospital. But we need services in South County as well as in North County. And we need much, much more youth mental health and support for families. We also have to look at the role of head injuries in our mental health system. It's unrecognized right now.
Thank you. Okay, we are at our last question of the evening. Okay. Nonprofit members of the Racial Equity Action Leadership Board, real? Nonprofit members of the Racial Equity Action Leadership, or REEL, coalition have been working to fight systemic racism within their organizations and among their governmental, philanthropic, and private sector partners. REEL has joined county staff in drafting the Racial Equity Strategic Roadmap, which outlines processes and practices to promote racial equity within the county administration and to improve outcomes for BIPOC community members. What are the major racial justice and equity milestones that the county should accomplish in the next two years, the next four years, and the next ten years? And Sally, we will start with you.
Yeah, I, I think that it should be easily accomplishable to develop a plan in one year, two years at the most, to engage all of the community and to develop a plan. I think that we need to look at, um, how the lack of racial justice and equity impacts on the issues that trouble us the most, uh, such as housing and the lack of, um, mental health and access to, uh, healthcare. So I think that those are, um, the most critical things. What, for me, would be the milestone in four years and over the next ten years would be to see that we have a reasonable level of equity in these issues. Healthcare, housing, access to social justice, appropriate levels of policing, a retreat from over incarceration, and, uh, a reasonable access to the environment, to green spaces, uh, to environmental justice and, uh, to a reduction in toxics in, uh, communities like the east side of San Jose. So there is, I, I think there's a basic set that would be identified by service providers in the community and by community members themselves that should be easily accomplishable. And again, I, I really believe in an all-of-government approach in threading it through everything that we do in terms of government. So not having a siloed, uh, committee of supervisors, but having every department within the county engaged in a meaningful way.
Can we go? Margaret?
Well, representation certainly matters. And, um, I was proud to be elected the first AAPI female on the Mountain View City Council. And, um, so it's been a pretty difficult part for, uh, for me to, um, work towards, uh, representation, equity. And as mayor in 2020, uh, when, uh, when we had, um, the issue of, frankly, police reform and, um, I think the reckoning of, um, R E I D E I, uh, I, as mayor, appointed, um, a, a council task for that hot committee on, um, race and privilege inclusion. And I came up with a number of recommendations. And one was to look at our city budget, uh, through an equity lens. And so we'll be doing that. I admit it's still in the infant stages, but I think we're one of the very few cities that has implemented such a measure. And, um, you know, I look to, towards other, uh, initiatives as well, looking internally, uh, making, making sure that we have representation, our, our staff is reflective of our community. Um, and I would do the same, um, at the, at the county level. So, um, looking at the budget, all of the, the programs, um, with, with that equity lens, ensuring that our staff is representative at all levels, all levels, all staff levels. And, um, and looking at the systemic, um, potential barriers that there might be to achieving these goals. Um, I think that's the, uh, the key point for me, to be always out in the community, meeting and talking with the different organizations. Um, and then frankly, if I am elected and have the opportunity to break that barrier and being the first APII to be elected board supervisor, so that I really think.
Thank you.
I'll be able to talk to you about things.
Thank you. Okay. Because we are a little behind schedule, we are not going to have remarks for this question. That was our last question of the evening. But before we go, we will have closing statements from each candidate. And, um, Margaret, you will start with you.
Well, thank you again, everyone, for coming. It's a real pleasure to be here and to speak with all of you. Uh, as, um, I appreciate the chance to share with you, um, my background, my perspective. Um, I was born and raised here on the peninsula, as I mentioned, to, with my parents. And it's really these lived experiences, like being a daughter with my parents, my husband, I worked really hard to buy our first home in Mountain View. I raised a family there. I also, um, took care of, took care of my parents as they went by years. Uh, so, um, I've had many different experiences and that's what I would bring to the, uh, County Board of Supervisors. I've, uh, worked in the community for decades. And so I think my list of over a hundred elected officials who've endorsed me shows that a relationship building is important and I've grown this relationship. And, um, I think that would be beneficial and I'm looking forward to building relationships with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally, your closing statement.
Well, I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight and thank you for having us. Clearly, us two could stay here for many hours and talk about policy. And, um, thank you for, for your attention and your participation in this. It really matters a lot. You know, Santa Clara County now, for, um, multiple decades, has been a place of policy innovation. And I think that now is the time with some of the outside forces that we face in terms of costs and, um, the, uh, blocking out of, of certain communities of people from being able to even live here, is the time to, uh, dig down and, and make those policy commitments that we've made over time, uh, be real. Um, some of the things that I think that are really the hallmark of where we have been and where we need to continue to go with all our challenges is looking at family strength and our work with boards and our policy innovations.
Thank you. Um, let's thank the candidates. And thank you guys for having me and thank you for talking.
All right, candidates.
One minute?
There we go. Candidates, thank you so much for joining us again today. Um, I appreciate you sharing your visions for our town's future. And of course, a special shout out to our amazing moderator, Monica. Thank you very much. All of your time is much appreciated and we're happy that you've enjoyed us here today. Uh, once again, thank you to all of our attendees for making it today and our co-sponsors, Silicon Valley Community Foundation and LaDella Community Services. Finally, as a nonprofit association, we want to be as accessible to you all as best as possible. Uh, please reference this information listed here if you'd like to contact our team. Your feedback and suggestions do help us improve the ways that we serve the sector. Um, that's it for our candidate forum today. Thank you for joining us. And as a reminder, all of these recordings from today will be posted on our YouTube page and we'll announce them as they're available.